This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles is absent today. Councilman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Echols?
Here.
Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Councilman Reed is also absent today. We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask President Williams to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to convene. Lord God, we thank you for all that are in attendance today. Father, we thank you for the great responsibility that's placed on this governing body, Father, and we also thank you for the great opportunity that's extended to all of the citizens in this great city. And Father, we ask that you would continue to touch us and bless us, Father. We live in very trying and difficult times, Father. We ask that you would issue a special measure of grace for this city, Father God, that we will endure and be a light in darkness, Father God, for us. In Jesus' name that we ask it all. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
It's good to hear those young voices out there. Very good. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on July 14th.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of July 10th through the 16th.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, Mayor.
Do you have any?
No proclamations. Number eight is unfinished business. The nuisances located at 1405 Stroud Avenue in District Two have been abated by the owner, therefore no action by the council is needed. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 712 Knuckle Street in District Two, Christie Butler Reed, Alabama Housing Finance Authority, and Family Savings Credit Union being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
You can come on up, ma'am. Hey, Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. This case involves a burned house. We started our process since September of last year. There've been no improvements to the property. There are no permits to improve. We're asking for a resolution today to abate the nuisance.
Ma'am, if you would, just state your name and address, please.
I'm Nancy Mullimax. I live at 711 Knuckle Street, across street from this house. This house burned about a year ago, a year ago this month, I think. It's awful. There's stuff all over the front porch. The house is boarded up. The grass needs cutting. And then you go around the back and it's even worse because there's this huge hole in the house. There's dead limbs and dead trees laying all over the backyard.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. Does anyone else wish to speak in favor? What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
For items 10 through 13, these are final public hearings or resolutions assessing nuisance abatement liens against property. This is for demolition that's already been performed and we have four locations. I'm going to read the addresses and names and anyone who wishes to speak about these may come forward. It's 805 Miller Avenue in District One. The amount is $3,633.68 and Gloria Sterling Little is the last known owner. 1403 Park Avenue, which is also in District One, $4,464.92, State of Alabama, heirs of Ludi Chambers and heirs of Dorothy Cassidy and American First Federal Credit Union. 212 East Lake Drive, which is in District Two, $1,806.40, Randall Graham, Diane Graham and Wakovia Bank. 127 Victory Street, District Two, $4,340.40, Eloise Colfield, Elijah Thornton III, Eugenia Latham, Carrie Thornton, and Kevin Thornton. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to any of these resolutions?
My name is Elijah Thornton III. Being the oldest of the four siblings that are listed here, and considering what has transpired, I totally disagree with how things were handled. Again, for my second time speaking to y'all, I totally disagree with how things were handled. Okay? Bad communication. Also, this price is ridiculous. Now, I have a brother that's here right now that actually started the demolition on the house. And when we started demolition on the house, we were told to stop. We was told to stop. So, I believe there's some conflict of interest right here and some communication that needs to be heard because if we was doing our own demolition, why are you charging me for something that we started on? Y'all be paying me too, huh? That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thornton. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to any of these?
I couldn't hear you.
Okay. Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt all four resolutions.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt all four resolutions, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 14 is a resolution authorizing warranty deeds for rights of way for the Tuscaloosa Avenue Bridge Replacement Project. The city owns the four parcels located along Tuscaloosa Avenue and Alda requires the city to execute deeds to dedicate rights of way. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 15 is a resolution authorizing agreement between the City of Gaston and Alda. This is for replacement of the dual bridges on US 431 over Black Creek, including maintenance and inspection of the proposed pedestrian bridge at the same location. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 16 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Alda. This is for traffic signal maintenance at dual bridges on US 431 over Black Creek. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I think Cynthia's got somebody voting for her out there since she's not here.
We'll be raising hands.
Item number 17 is a resolution establishing use of city-owned property for community gardens. This approves guidelines to ensure that gardens under the program are supported by the neighborhood and care for properly. The location of each community garden must be approved by the mayor. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay. New business? Is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a couple of new business items. I asked for unanimous consent to consider a resolution authorizing acceptance of grant from Etowah County Community Development Committee in the amount of $10,000. And the second one is the amended fiscal year for 2015 budget to reflect the funding from Etowah County Community Development Committee. $10,000.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is a, we're getting $10,000 to fix the city parks at, was that the one?
Softball.
Softball complex. Do some work there. And then the other one, the second resolution is to reflect it in the budget for 2015.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion to consider both of these items today and a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution and the ordinance today as items of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have consent to be considered, so.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution and the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt both items.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I have asked for unanimous consent to consider a resolution appointing members of the Gaston Airport Authority.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, this is a resolution authorizing Jackie Ragland is the newly appointed for the Gaston Airport Authority to replace Jarvis Rawls, whose term expired in July 31st, 2011. Jackie Ragland's term will expire July 31st, 2017. Chad Hare is appointed to replace Mike Ray, whose term expires July 31st, 2015. Chad Hare's term will expire July 31st, 2021. David Cochran is appointed to replace Mike McCartney, whose term expires July 31st, 2013. David Cochran's term will expire July 31st, 2019. The following individuals are reappointed to serve on the Gaston Airport Authority. Fred Singleton Jr. for a term expiring on July 31st, 2021. William Cunningham for a term expiring on July 31st, 2019. And J. Harry McLendon for a term expiring on July 31st, 2021.
Mayor, what's the J. stand for?
Mayor.
Mayor, what's the J. stand for? Do you know?
J.
Yeah, and J. Harry.
Uh, I'm not sure.
Yeah. What?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'm reading all that.
All right. And just for information purposes, these, this is one of three pay boards that we have. Most of our boards are occupied by people who volunteer their time and efforts, but this is one of three paid boards. The Airport Authority is one, the Board of Education is another, and the Water Works and Sewer Board is also a paid appointment. All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I move for adoption.
Oh, okay. All right. Is there any more new business? Okay. Department reports, committees, boards. Citizens request. Mr. Cole here, just spoke. Mr. Cole, if you would, state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Just five? Okay. My name is Joseph Cole and I'm a resident of Atlanta, Georgia. I'm here today, President Williams and members of the council and to Mr. Mayor and all the citizens. I'm here today to address two issues and I'm not here on a doomy gloom so everybody can feel comfortable. I'm here in essence to the city hiring. I attended a civil service board meeting on yesterday and for you all know, I have been here on several occasions and I came here last year because I had received word that the City of Gaston, the Police Department and the Fire Department were discriminating against blacks in the hiring practices. So I had filed the initial suit some years ago in these matters, so I had prepared to come back to file suit against the city if these accusations were correct. But when I got here, I spoke to Mayor Guyton and he directed me to his personnel department, which was very cooperative and gave me all of the information that I needed in respect to the recruitment and what was going on in the process of trying to hire blacks on the police and fire department in this city. And what I learned through my attempts, my recruitment and all, that the city was not in any fashion discriminating against any blacks or anyone else in the hiring process. The problem were, we just didn't have the applicants and those who did apply was not passing the exam. So what I did was to continue to try to recruit and continue to prepare individuals. And yesterday at the hiring by the Civil Service Board, there was some hiring of firefighters and one of those firefighters was an African-American, which I'm happy to say this morning. Also, I spoke to Captain Bobby Jackson, who has been strongly trying to increase diversity on the police department along with the chief here. So I feel very comfortable that the city is doing all that it can to get diverse in the departments and also in the City of Gaston. I know the mayor has caught some flak because when you come in City Hall, most of the faces you see are white. But I know he's been trying to increase the number of blacks and you can't fire people that's been working for years. So when Vegas has occurred, what you do is try to find the best applicant and hopefully things will work out. So I'm here to, you know, off of my system. I protest and I know how to fight, but I fight when I have to fight and when there's no need to fight, I'm joining the ranks. So I just want to thank the city and your efforts, Chief Crane and the fire chief especially, Mr. Mayor, your personnel department, which I know have become tired of me because I call them, I show up. I was showing up so much, I think Jerry Glad went out the back door one day I came in his office. But I do appreciate the assistance. I appreciate the mayor's assistance because he can tell you, I bug you, I've even called him at his home. But I haven't been asking for things for myself, I've just been trying to help and deal with the city. On the other matter of the constituent services, I'm particularly concerned with the Community Development Department. We have seniors in this city and seniors are your most loyal voters. And we have seniors who are not aware of the benefits that they can receive due to community development. Councilman Worthy and also Councilman Billingsley, I have assisted some of your constituents. One elderly man who luckily got his, a new roof on his house, got some repairs to his house. And also a lady who getting some repairs to her house and her house is now being painted. They provided the paint and then they found a group to come out to volunteer in painting. That's going on today as we speak. But my thing is, is I was telling Ms. Henson and I spoke to President Williams about this, that we need to get a, I don't know what kind of method, but a better method of getting the word out because most seniors don't go on the internet. Some of them, when you have your community meetings, they do not attend, but we need to get the word out to them. I spoke to a lady last night who told me that her mother, who's in her 80s, and she's also in your district, Councilman Worthy, and she's here, maybe want to speak to you. Her roof is falling in, the kitchen floors, but there are funds available. And I told them this, so we just need to know, I don't know if public service or not, I know it's broadcast on TV, but something needs to be done so the elderly know that there is funds available for them to get assistance. So I'm just coming here to try to help bring that out and to render any assistance that I can. I thank you, Council President Williams, for your attention on this and I thank all of you. So, you know, we can disagree, but we don't have to be disagreeable because we're all trying to work for the same thing. So I thank you for this time, hopefully I didn't go over, just there, right? So, well, I said, God bless this country, God bless this city, and God bless you as you perform your duties and responsibilities.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cole. I will, um, I will say as it relates to that topic that we, you know, that the mayor is aware of some of the opportunities we might have as it relates to communication and some discussion has been had relative to using our church community to help reach out to our elderly population because, you know, that's generally somewhere where if our elderly people can't make it to a lot of other places and if they can't access the internet or don't watch television, you know, they're going to be faithful relative to their local church service. So that's, that's something that we're going to try to use and maybe take a page out of the chief's book. I know he, he went on a church tour not too long ago, reaching out, trying to actively source for candidates, so that may be something that we'll do going forward. But again, that, that is a topic that's, that's on the radar for us.
Yes, I was accused of preaching, but that's good. We, we do and we've had some churches volunteer. There's one church on West Meegen over there, the railroad tracks going towards Atala, I think it's Daystar. I think they've painted about five or six houses in the last couple of years and we do talk about that a lot. Anybody who's 60 years old, emergency repairs we have, if there's no kids living in the house under six years old because of lead-based paint, then we can furnish the paint, the brushes. And our inspectors, Commander King on one side of town and Mitchell Trupel on the other who do nuisance abatement and stuff, several times they have told me of people, they told them to call us and we got in touch with them, we put on roofs, we put on heating and cooling. If it's something big like that, I think up to, I might be right, $5,000. And for every year you live there, we take away a thousand at the end of five years, you owe nothing. And some people are a little bit afraid, we're going to like foreclose, you know, they have to get them to understand, but it's just, it's government money, it's a HUD thing and we try to work that on all angles, all the time, sure do.
I appreciate that. And again, as it relates to the hiring, I referenced it earlier, Chief Crane's been very active in actively sourcing for candidates. We just need people to come out and qualify candidates, to come out and apply. And we, we know that we have an opportunity there and, you know, and, you know, we have to say this, but the mayor or the council aren't able to get involved in that because there's a civil service board in place. So, so it's, it's not, it's not something that's largely in our ability to impact or change. We've, we've said a lot about, about, you know, our opinions about the process and, and so people, but we have to remind folks how that process works. Okay. Remarks from the mayor and council? Mayor?
Just want to say, we had a really good meeting upstairs. We had the commissioner of the Alabama Labor Department here. I'm going to be getting in touch with him for a lot of information we can put on Channel 99. It's amazing how many jobs are available. I know Councilman Worthy's been pushing this jobs fair they're going to have and people don't realize. And I'm going to branch off of that a little bit and talk about career tech. That's what, we're one of the top states doing that and we started working that about 2006 or '07 and got it in place. We have some things set up for Gaston City High School students. We got about a $3 million career tech building. We got a lot of equipment, work with the different companies on the kind of skills people need. It's okay to go to college, get a four-year degree, but you can pick up two years of career tech. You can also have dual enrollment. They tell me the community college director, Green, did the other day in a meeting that there's been a couple of kids that graduated from the junior college and then graduated from high school two weeks later. So there's a lot of opportunities. We also have some, maybe some assistance through the junior college for, you have to have a C average to get in and you maintain that and that would cover books, tools and tuition and they need to, you need to check on it. Parents, grandparents, please talk to them about that. I'll tell this joke, which is true, I tell it all the time. The plumber was at the doctor's house doing a job, he got through, he gave the doctor the bill. The doctor said, "My goodness, that's more than I make." He said, "That's why I quit practicing medicine, start plumbing." So there's a lot of good paying jobs in career tech and you can always go on and get a four-year degree too. So you really need to really pay attention to this, it's very important. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Amen.
Mr. Echols? Okay. Councilman Worthy?
I'd like to speak to what Mr. Cole was saying. I've been working with several people in the community to try to help them get their house, houses and homes fixed, but the community development would only do $5,000. If the house costs over $5,000, they won't touch it unless you fix the rest of it first because they want you to continue living in it. But if you're elderly, I think if it's 62 and older, they'll go up to $7,500. But we have a lot of older homes, especially in our community. So what I've been, I've talked with the mayor, talked with several of the council people about upping that price to $10,000 and then $12,500 for the elderly. So we working on that. It just takes time. But we try to put this information out and that, that way the radio station could help us out a lot. We could do ads on the radio station or we could, you know, go on and talk and let people know what's going on in the community. Because we have a lot of good stuff going on, but people really don't realize it and we don't have a platform to put it out there. So I just want the people to know, we are working, we're doing things. Okay. Second point, I'm going to have my community meeting, I'm going to move it to Saturday, August the 1st, at Carver from 12 to 1:00 PM. Matter of fact, the young lady that asked me to move it to Saturday, I see her sitting out here in the audience and I want to thank her. We're going to move it to Saturday and see if we can attract more people to come to the community meeting. But now when football season starts, I won't be having it on Saturday because I have two sons to play college football, so I will be traveling to their games. Okay. Enough said about that. Now I'm going to talk about the job fair. And I was so happy that the Labor Secretary was here this morning. And we're going to have the job fair on August the 5th from 9:00 to 1:00 PM. We're trying to advertise, we got it on TV, we got it on radio stations, so nobody can say they didn't hear about it. So I've been announcing this for over a month now. We have over 8,000 jobs within 50 miles of Gaston. So far, we have about 15 companies that'll be there at this job fair. We have one that's committed to interview and hire on the spot. So we're going to also have people there to help you do your resume. And also going to talk about if you qualify, they'll pay you a way to Gaston State to get a two-year degree, a skill, because we have a lot of skilled labor jobs here in Gaston. We have over 800 jobs in Gaston. Gaston region, I have over 100 job openings right today from housekeeping all the way Gaston region, I have over 100 job openings right today, from housekeeping all the way up to doctors. So there's no reason why, if you want a job, you should be able to find a job here in Gaston. So it's no more excuses. We got to get our young people prepared to join the workforce. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Billingsley?
Yes, this past weekend, last Saturday, I went out to the cemetery on South Sixth Street and worked out there for about an hour and a half, Ms. Bostick. I mean, I'm glad I went to college so that I don't have to work like that. But people have to understand, we have to do those type of jobs also. And the majority of the people that came out to help at that cemetery were not from Gaston. Now that's unconscionable for us to ask other people to come do things for us that we don't do for ourselves. And it was very, very hot out there. And I also want to ask the citizens, that you can call our offices if you have messages for us at the city clerks, and they will get that to us. So if you have things that need to be done in your community, just call us, we'll do what we can. Thank you.
I'll piggyback on that. I always tell people that the most prudent way to get a message through to a council member is to call the city clerk's office, because you, you know, they log it, and you go on record as having reached out to them. So if they don't follow up, you know, there's evidence there that you did reach out to that council member. So again, I always encourage people, and when, again, I've only been an elected official for five years. So when I was just a regular, ordinary citizen, reaching out to elected officials, I went through the city clerk's office simply because I knew that they could hold them accountable, and that was the best way to reach them. So I always encourage that, and that's a very good point. Councilman Billingsley? Councilman Cannon?
Thank you, Councilman President Williams. Mr. Cole, I appreciate you coming up here, telling us, trying to get the message out about rehab on the houses in District 6. I think we did 10 or 12 so far in District 6. Myself, actually, in the last three weeks, I've taken two people up community development, get roofs and painting done. But what I run into here lately is a lot of people have their grandkids living with them, younger grandkids, and that throws them off right there of getting any help, you know. So we, that's one stipulation, I don't know if we can work through that, if it's federal guidelines, we couldn't work through that. But there's a lot of folks that's raising their grandkids now, young grandkids, and that really stops them from getting a program. There's been five or six that, you know, that I know of in District 6 that we couldn't help because of that. But we're continuing to get people to try to paint the houses for people in the city of Gaston, you know, furnish the paint. We did the contract, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, maybe last week, or I think a decorator store got the paint contract on it, so we're ready to go. We just need volunteers for that. I know if it's over 62, it's $7,500 for a roof now. We also, community development has other programs where that you can... Your sewage or something messes up in your house, you might get some help with that, emergency situations, you know. Just have to check with them in community development, see what they got. But I'm glad you brought that to the attention of everybody today, so they would know what to do. It's hot weather that it is, maybe need your central heat and air fixed or something like that, you know. But we just really need to make sure we try to take care of our citizens and tell them all about the programs we offer. We could do a better job, I agree with you, you know. At my district meetings, I try to tell everybody in word of mouth, if a fan's right and needs something, I'll tell them what to do. A lot of times, like the mayor said, people won't take the initiative to come and do it, you know. And that's, the old saying is, you can lead them, but you can't make them drink, you know. But I appreciate you coming, telling us about this today. I want to announce that this is fourth Saturday at the gazebo in Alabama City. We're going to play this week, since it's going to be so hot. We're going to start about 2 o'clock playing CDs and stuff, and the live music will start about 5, and the hot dogs will be there at 5, and Grover Brown with the corn, he'll be there at 5. So it'll probably go live music, and the bands will be playing from about 5 to 9 this week, because, due to the weather and the heat situation. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Cannon. And I'll just, again, you know, he gets on a very good point. One thing I found out, you kind of take it for granted if you're not involved in the public sector activities on a day-to-day basis. But one of the things that I learned, even through the initial campaign scenario, that one of the most difficult things to try to figure out is how people best get information. And that's a, you know, that's a fluid answer, depending on who you ask. If you ask an elderly person, they get information best through their church or through word of mouth. If you ask a younger person, they get information via social media or online. And so, you know, we have a great responsibility, I think, to just try our best, you know. And I don't think it's because of a lack of trying, but we have an opportunity to just try to make sure we're putting information where people can get it. The Gaston Times used to be a good space and a good opportunity for people to get information. But now, you know, not everybody takes the Times. So it's not something that we can, you know, that can serve as the only way of getting information out. Again, my dear friend and a member of the governor's cabinet, Fitzgerald Washington, came up and spoke with us earlier today in pre-council. And in light of that, you know, the mayor touched on it, and, you know, just want to reiterate that. One of the things, a couple of things that he spoke to were soft skills and the talent gap that we're going to have to fill as a state going forward. So one thing I'll just throw out there, and AIDT didn't pay me to do this, but I'll throw it out there because I think it's important. AIDT, which is not a function of the Department of Labor, but they are a function of the Department of Commerce for the state. And they offer what's called a Skills at Work program that's actually free for anybody that's transitioning. And they teach soft employment skills. They teach interviewing skills, communication skills. They give you tips on submitting an application. But one of the most compelling things is they also introduce you to computers and help people to understand what it means to use the Microsoft Office package. So there are a lot, and really, there's too much for us to try to cover in an hour-long meeting, but there's a lot of resources out there. People just have to come out of their homes to some level, or go online, go into the libraries, go to these career centers. There are people that get paid every day to make sure that this information gets disseminated. And we try to help as many, as Councilman Word spoke to earlier, we try to help as many people as we possibly can. I had a young lady stop me upstairs, and in 10 minutes, I gave her my elevator speech on where information is as far as job assistance and transitional assistance and workforce development assistance. The challenge for us in this state, and I shared this when we were at a joint event a couple Saturdays ago, and I shared this. Right now, in 2025, we don't have, for the year 2025, we don't have the ability at normal birth rates to birth enough talent to meet the needs that we're going to have in 2025. We have, before us, we have a manufacturing crisis, where our young people, just like they've kind of turned themselves off to farming, and there's a crisis because, you know, children just aren't interested in being farmers. There's a crisis now for manufacturing. Young people have seen their parents leave home fresh and come home tired for so many years, until they've kind of turned themselves off to that manufacturing work. So they don't want to do it. And so what a number of states are doing, I'm sorry, a number of counties are doing is they're starting to target both 7th and 8th graders in preparation for the talent needs that they're going to have in four or five years. And so you'll hear us talk more about some things here that we may try to do locally to start targeting our middle school students, to give them some exposure to some of these jobs that they don't know about. And the mayor's been sounding the trumpet for years about career tech and what some people used to call vocational tech. And this is why, because there are a number of well-paying jobs out there that our folks are missing because they don't necessarily know about them. Yes, what happens is the council member returns the call, and then that council member will talk directly with that individual. Yeah, they'll arrange that with that individual directly. Okay, all right. Okay. The only other thing I had is, I attended a meeting last week in Montgomery. And again, I just want people to be familiar with and aware of what's going to be discussed in the upcoming special session. Of course, you know, everybody knows, it's been no secret that the state budget is the big topic of discussion. And what's at stake is a number of cuts in services that are going to be passed down to local municipalities. So that's why we're so interested in what's going on. The cuts are likely going to be in law enforcement, corrections, and Medicaid and mental health. And so with that being the case, you know, those are things that are going to get pushed back to our communities, and we have to be prepared for and ready to address them. One of the more interesting things that's come out of all this is that the Porch Creek Band of Indians has offered... Basically, it's widely held that the number to meet the void in the budget is $250 million. And so the Porch Creek Band of Indians, if you've seen some of those commercials and some of the discussion, they've stepped up and said, "Hey, if you allow us to do table games in our casinos, we'll give the state $250 million to fill that void." Stay on top of that, because I think that's very compelling. Yeah, very interesting, and it is quid pro quo, but it's very interesting, and very interesting. It'll be interesting to see how the state legislation responds to that. And of course, again, some of the things that you should be mindful of also is that they're proposing a 25 cents per pack tobacco tax or cigarette tax and a 5 cents tax on carbonated drinks. So, and the goal at some level is to make up the gap. I don't think those two in and of themselves will make the gap up, but they're supposed to generate, you know, several million dollars worth of revenue. So again, just informational, stay on top of that, and please, if you have any special interest as it relates to that, reach out to your state legislators. Councilman Word, did you have?
Oh, I don't believe I mentioned where the job fair would be, but it would be at the Senior Activity Center downtown. Like I said, August 5th from 9:00 to 1:00. And I also failed to mention, we went to the retirement program for Reverend Huff Saturday, and it was a wonderful program, and we wish him well during his retirement. Thank you.
Councilman Echols? You didn't have anything? Okay. All right, if there's nothing else, entertain a motion that we adjourn.